Of August is four o'clock. Erica, could you please do a roll call for us and let folks know how to get in touch online?
Sure. Today we have Chair Bluth.
Here.
Vice Chair Silva.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
I can go ahead and, oh, I'd like to announce that Commissioner Latassa will be absent and our staff members present today, we have our planning manager Levi Hill, Principal Planner Fernando Roveri, Principal Planner Kristi Sabdo, Senior Associate Planner Chris Schmidt, Senior Associate Planner Matthew Bugert, and myself, Recording Secretary Erica Barrera. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/Agendas. Remote commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you, Erica. Okay, we'll start with the consent agenda. Three items. We'll have to do them individually, so why don't we just start with the first one?
First, sorry, first we'll need to just check with the public if any member of the public has a comment on the consent agenda or if any member of the public would like to pull an item from consent.
Anybody in the audience like to make a comment on the consent agenda or pull an item? Seeing none, anybody online, Erica?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay, then let's, we can just do them individually. We'll start with the first one, consider 2076 North Fremont Street Architectural Review Permit, ARP 250134 for structural repairs of an existing hotel. Okay, great, thank you. I don't think we need a presentation for it. It was pretty clear in the packet.
And I'm just gonna, for the record, let note that Commissioner Silva has recused himself from this item and left the room.
Okay. Do we want to just do a vote on that item?
Well, move to approve.
Move to approve? Okay, we have a.
Bad item.
Okay, you're gonna second? Mike, you want to second that one? Okay, great. So we have a motion and a second. Erica, could you do a roll call for that, please?
Sure, Chair Bluth.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Okay, can we get Peter back? Thank you. Oh, no worries. Okay, moving on, we have the two other items on the agenda. It's gonna be the minutes. Why don't we just start with June 15th and see if we have enough votes on that one?
June 10th.
June 10th to approve that item. Who's gonna recuse?
Three, as presented.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, can we do a roll call on that?
Sure. Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Think I'll abstain on that one. I was not here.
Okay. Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, those minutes are approved.
Great. Moving on to July 22nd. Any comments? Okay, why don't we move ahead on that one, too? We have a motion and, okay, so a good, so a motion and a second. Could you do a roll call on that one, too, please?
Sure. Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Great, those minutes have been approved as well.
Great. All right, we've wrapped up the consenting agenda. Okay, we'll come get you. So anybody in chambers have any comments on items that are not on the agenda? Erica, anybody online?
Sorry, excuse me. I currently see no hands raised online.
Okay, all right, let's move on to the first item, consider 2400 Garden Road. Lisa Kermit applicant, LP 25 0013 for a daycare general use and variance application VA 25 0075 for reduced front and side yard setbacks. Were you gonna do a staff presentation for that?
Sure, so in the interest of being efficient with everyone's time, so the, as you probably saw, we did receive a public comment on this item from the applicant. The applicant is requesting continuance to a date certain, which would be our August 26th meeting. So what I suggest that we do is we check in the chambers and then online if anyone from the public is attending the meeting to hear that item. And then if they're not, we can forego the staff presentation for this meeting if the commission's inclined to continue the item. So at this time, if we can just check in the chambers, seeing nobody.
Anybody in the chamber have any interest in this item?
This is item number five on the agenda.
Well, I will as part of making the request.
Okay. Right, anybody online, Erica?
There are a few attendees online, however, there are no hands raised.
Okay, let's pull it back. I think continuing sounds like a great idea. Do we have a motion for that?
And I just want to read into the record that Commissioner Silva has once again recused himself from this item and has left the room.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Okay. Second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Can we do a roll call on that, please, Erica?
Sure, Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva has recused himself, Commissioner Brassfield. Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Great.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Sure, we'll look forward to hearing it in a week or two weeks. Thanks. Okay, can we go get Peter?
Leave Chris's.
Oh, great.
Item number six.
Yep. Welcome back.
That was quick.
Yes, no, we made quick work of it. Let's see, so next item on the public appearance, number six, is confirm annual appointments for chair and vice chair. I think we, do we have a presentation for that?
Just a normal recap and.
Question?
Of course.
This talks about SEQA, wasn't SEQA sort of tossed recently?
Not tossed, there was more carve-outs in the state law as far as what projects are exempt from SEQA and additional exemptions, but the law itself is still certainly in effect. So we are still required to make SEQA determinations on discretionary decisions.
Okay, so in the packet, it looked like Peter's gonna be chair and Terry would be vice chair. Terry's not here, but can we still vote for having him as vice chair even though he's not around to say no?
Subject to him.
Yeah.
Is there a Shanghai law?
Happened to me, so we can't do it to somebody else.
Exactly. So Terry has not, this has been published in multiple agenda packets, Terry's not voiced or Commissioner Latassa's not voiced any opposition to taking the position of vice chair. And so I think we're comfortable with moving forward with that appointment. But yeah, just to recap, as included in the agenda report is that time of the year for our annual rotation of chair and vice chair. And as you noted, Chair Bluth, next in line would be Commissioner Silva to serve as chair and Commissioner Latassa as vice chair.
Outstanding. Well, you ready to change places?
Let's do it.
All right, well, I think that's enough. Should we just do a vote on it?
Is this a motion?
So you can make a motion to just confirm the appointments.
Yes, I make a motion to confirm the appointment of Peter Silva as chairman and Terry Latassa as vice chair.
Okay, do we have a second?
And as to running short term, I vote yes.
Yay, all right, there we go.
Go ahead and take a vote on that for the minutes.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. Erica, could you please do a roll call for that?
Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved.
Yay.
Now hypothetically, if I had voted no, there would be a majority, right? So I would still be chair, even if I personally voted no.
I believe there is some language in the, in the guidelines that you can decline and then we would have to then go through, cycle through until we get someone.
But it wasn't, it wasn't declining, it was just simply voting no.
Yeah. I may have to consult with legal counsel.
To have Terry not be as your vice chair.
What would be the difference?
You may have to.
He'd be serving under protest.
Yeah.
All right, well, on that wonderful note, so anybody have any comments to make, general comments?
Yes, I have one comment. So I'm sure you all know the HPC is seeing property at 581 Scott Street again on Thursday and the likelihood perhaps is that we'll come back to the planning commission either for approval or on appeal. And so I think it would be helpful if this time we have the minutes available of their discussion. More complicated than I thought it was. Not sure why, but I think that would be very helpful to have the minutes along with whoever is gonna be here for either the presentation or the appeal.
We're happy to do that. As a reminder, as you are all aware, when you review the minutes for this commission, we have moved to recording action minutes, so they're not as detailed as they, as they perhaps were at points in the past. But we will certainly provide those minutes at the packet. And then, of course, just like these meetings, our HPC meetings are recorded and are viewable online if you want to get really into the details. That's, that's possible as well. But yeah, thank you for that comment.
Sandy, can you remind me which application this was?
This is the White Historic Kellam House on the corner of Scott and Mark and they put a large addition onto it that was not the same as the old.
I recall it now.
Now they're getting the tobacco shop and the garage and a tiny addition to a roof deck. And attorneys and neighbors and complaints.
Didn't we vote on that previously and
Yes.
there was a approval for the expansion? They've gone over that, I'm assuming.
The tobacco shop and the garage and the small, the very tiny part of the roof to put a deck on.
Was that a Mills Act project?
Yeah.
Originally it was, and it was approved.
Any other comments?
I do. We all saw that their state of California changed SEQA a little bit. Do we have a presentation what those changes are for the next meeting?
Not sure if we'll be able to pull it together before the next meeting, but sure, happy to do a recap if, yeah, absolutely.
It's a pain. We deal with it, but it would be nice to know what the changes are.
Absolutely.
Mike? Levi, any wisdom for us on the future?
I don't know about wisdom for the future, but I do have a planning office update for you. So as noted in the agenda report, we did have a first reading for our SB 9 ordinance, which proposed amendments to chapters 33 and 38 of the Monterey City Code. And that did pass first reading, so that will go to second reading at the next council meeting and become effective 30 days from that date. And then also noted as items and tentatively scheduled for the next meeting, we do have a potential application at 611 My House Avenue. And then, of course, the item that was continued from tonight, which was continued to the next, next meeting. And that's all we have.
Great, well, thank you. We'll close this meeting of the planning commission at 4:15. Thank you.